Jeff, and you are taking over in our insurance discussions?
I can give you a little bit of background on this. I think, was it July, I believe it was July, when the Commission first voted, you know, the plan that was in place. And since then, there's been some continuing discussions as far as revisiting the contribution levels to the HSA. And what I wanted to do today is just give a little additional information out and let the Commission kind of discuss it. At that meeting, we discussed where we fell insurance-wise between our comparable utilities. At that time, we only had 2012 data. What I'm handing you right here is the 2013 data. Now, just kind of bit of a disclaimer, this is not intended to be a high, this is just a high-level summary of the health insurance. This isn't a detailed survey of health benefits for each of these utilities. But we wanted to point out is, if somebody's looking at another position, these are probably the pieces of information they're going to ask about the health insurance when they're making an informed decision about taking a position or not. And again, this is calendar year 2013 only. It doesn't include the 2014 changes with the HSA. Again, it's snapshot today, here's what health insurance is for our comparable utilities. Those numbers will go down in 2015 if our employees do take the HSA. Based on those contribution levels and the lower cost of health insurance, the premiums go down. So, again, there's a lot of information on there. I don't want to overwhelm you with numbers today, but just kind of looking at this, you can see, out of our eight comparables, ourselves and several, seven other comparables, we are seven out of eight as far as, if you take a look at what the premium costs are, what the deductible would be, less any contribution to an HSA or additional contribution that an employer may give an employee, taking a look at all those different pieces.
Unusual, at both Manasseh and the Platinum Lock, the employees pay nothing.
They do. And at Sun Prairie, Sun Prairie has seven health plans available to them. What Sun Prairie does is they pay 100% of the lowest cost premium. So again, there's another instance where you could have no cost health insurance to the employee.
Well, this is back on the agenda because I've had, you know, discussions with city folks and we've exchanged emails and I told the mayor we would put this back on our agenda to consider, so.
One question that was asked, I think at the last council meeting when I watched it, was the cost of funding 2015 versus the city's plan. That number comes out to right around $67,500 is the additional cost. And I can give you just a real quick and dirty spreadsheet. I know that question was asked by one of the older people there. What you're seeing here is the 2015. What was passed by the Commission in July and then what the city's doing. I'm showing you, our cost to fund the HSA is based on our current employee makeup, is right around $112,500. If all those employees be under what the city's currently doing, that cost would be $45,000. So the difference is that $67,500.
And what was the cost difference between our old insurance and what this is going to be to the utility?
When we looked at, if we took, if we looked at the current plan, what we have today, kind of extrapolated out with 4% increases over the next couple of years, and we looked at what the, what the Commission passed with that, with the HSA funding, it saves about $43,000, around $44,000 is the savings over two years to the Commission.
Savings to us?
Savings to us.
That's quite a savings.
Yes.
In how it affects the employee? Are, are the way it's set up, because I cannot remember that.
Sure.
Will it still be beneficial to them, providing they, I think, don't we have a system where they have to, that the family checks in and, and make sure that they're healthy or something like that? Because our plan's like that.
We do have health risk assessments available to our employees. In 2014, they receive a 5% reduction in healthcare costs if they completed the health risk assessment in 2013. So that is beneficial to them.
Because cost of, of health, when you find out early if there's a problem, saves a heck of a lot of money down the line. And if you wait till they get to say cancer from stage one to stage four, there's a lot of difference. So if you get things early enough, not only is it easier for the patient, but it's also easier on our insurance.
I would agree.
I mean, what we had, you know, talked about in the past, I mean, this is a big change in health insurance from what we've had in the past, but I think everybody's going to go towards the HSA because the other one is, the price of it has escalated so much, it doesn't make sense to stay on it. So I guess what we had talked about at the last meeting was, and what you approved and what we're reconsidering, is you approved funding the deductibles for the employees the first two years of the new plan. And the city has agreed to fund, how, $1,000, $1,500 the second year or whatever?
The half of what the, the first year, the full amount, the second year, half.
Right. The second year. So naturally, they would like us to be consistent with them, I think. And Sue's willing to speak.
Well, I think that's, you know, probably what the emails have been, as I understand, I've been part of that. But yeah, I think that's more just the consistency of the participants in the plan and, and so that's, I think that's really the main issue. I think we all acknowledge that it is, you know, it took change for everyone and, and Plan B is such that, you know, as Jim said, part of it is to make it less attractive so that we get more in the HSA. So, so the numbers do look pretty high, but I think the HSA is, you know, we're trying to really establish the HSA as, as the plan. And I think people can kind of have more control over their, their healthcare somewhat and so.
And regardless of what decision is made today, you know, it's Jim and mine, firm belief that the Commission will do our due diligence in 2015, looking ahead and seeing what options are available for our employees for healthcare. I know, you know, there's a lot of questions coming out with October 1st, with the healthcare exchanges opening up for people to say, what is healthcare going to look like for premiums in 2014? The Office of Commissioner of Insurance came out with their numbers this week and they look like pretty steep increases from their comparables. So I think, you know, again, we'll do our due diligence next year to see, you know, what is the best option for our employees.
Maybe, maybe they like everything else, they give you the absolute worst, so that if it doesn't turn out that bad, they'll say, oh, well, we did really well.
Look how good we did.
Are there any more questions, so Jeff?
And that deductible is $2,000?
$2,500 for a family and $5,000 for an individual, I think.
$1,250 for an individual.
And ours is $2,500 in the second year.
Correct. That's what we approved prior, correct. And the city's at half of that for their employees.
I believe the city's on $500,000 and $1,000.
So they want us to go down to the...
I'm sorry?
Do you have the deductibles for 2015? I believe it was $500 and $1,000 for their employees.
Which isn't quite half.
A little less than half, right.
I guess I thought I was standing, but maybe.
No, I think I've got it actually somewhere.
You probably have before I did. HSA.
And what, and what we did before.
Yeah, $1,250 and $2,500 and, okay, $500 and $1,000, you're right.
For a second.
So you're looking for what, a motion to continue what we've done or to change what we've done? What are we looking for here?
That's up for the Commission to decide.
Basically, if you want to keep it the same as the city or continue to what we've agreed upon.
In the long run, Jeff, do you think by following the procedure that we have proposed of starting out with the $2,500 in, in the first year, mean that in the end, it will be more of a saving to us than going the way that the city is doing?
That 2015 cost, you know, and that spreadsheet shows it's a $67,000 additional cost to the Commission. So if funding levels tied into what the city's doing, then that money would be savings to the Commission.
To the utility and out of the employee's pocket.
So the employee will be paying that difference.
Okay. I guess that should be a, a decision, a fact, a decision.
How many of the city employees, the percentage, have taken the HSA?
I don't, they're all due, I think, Monday, so I really can't...
Really? Yeah. All of the forms to be filled out.
The open enrollment.
Open enrollment ends Monday. I mean, I haven't filled mine out yet either.
I mean, I would, I shouldn't guess, but I would say it's, it's definitely more than half.
It's going to be the majority. You just look at the costs, you can't justify staying on the old plan, I mean, just from a personal...
And there's a lot that haven't turned it in yet, so I think a lot of your employees are kind of, maybe were waiting for this.
Why are they waiting for, I mean, that's not a fair question, Sue, I'm sorry. You know, what we do here has nothing to do with what they do, you know? You're comparing completely two different workgroups. You know, we're, you know, we're not funded, we're funded differently. And I don't know why anybody is comparing what we do here with what the city does. I think...
I agree with everything you said, other than they own us.
Right, but you still run this as a business.
Yeah, but I mean, that doesn't mean, you know, that doesn't, I mean, they've also hired us to run this business.
They elected you to do that, correct?
Right, and, yeah.
And if we didn't do it adequately, they would all be fired because they want to. We are basically making a profit. If we didn't make that profit, we couldn't pay the city $1.5 million in taxes.
Well, we'd have to pay that whether we're making money or not.
That's true. That's true.
Well, and the city has the plan for you guys, and the city, and, and all of the participants, your employees are all participants in our plan. And I guess it's consistency, you know, in the plan and technically, they are city employees for most legal purposes.
It's a, it's a plan, but who pays that premium should be, it shouldn't be a concern of theirs.
Well, the fund, well, I mean, I'm assuming that the fund is paying, kind of the fund is paying the HSA premium.
A thousand in the first year, I think, or 1,100 in the first?
We're paying, yeah, right, we're paying the, the 500 and 1,000 and the fund is paying that additional.
For the first year.
For the first year.
But the fund's not paying anything this second year, from what I understood, I don't know, but...
Right, well, yeah, you guys are, if you're paying something more than what the city would be paying, then that, obviously that's coming out of...
That's that $60,000 number.
Right, yeah.
Well, you know, I know experience with this plan, it's tough to get the employees to stay on it because you usually underfund the employee. And there's a couple catastrophes that happen and that $1,000 goes in one day. And, you know, if you want to keep them on, you also have to emphasize, they have to continually add to their HSA.
And there are out-of-pocket limits, like for a single person, it's $1,900 a year. Once, for me, for example, I'll get $1,250 funded, you know, through the HSA and then my premiums are only 5% of a smaller number. And I mean, once I, if I reach the 1,900, I mean, that's it. I don't pay another penny for a prescription, I don't pay another penny, I don't pay any copays, I don't pay any co-insurance, I don't pay anything. It's limited and then that is, I mean, in Plan B, there was, there still is the limit too, but I think you have to realize that too, that there is, there's limits. But it's, you know, it's a philosophical debate really of, of that, and I certainly understand that you want to, you know, cushion the, the impact on the employee or are willing to pay more towards their expenses. And, you know, I, that's, and the city can't tell you what you can, cannot do and I evidently, some city officials have expressed how they feel, how they feel that you should do it and...
I'd beat up.
You know, so, you know, it's, it's really...
But it's your decision.
It's your decision, right?
And, I mean, we had the discussion about this the last time we met out and I think we're having a good discussion on it, on it today.
Well, maybe the, the correct city officials that disagree with, they should be with us today.
Well, they were, there was a death in the family of one person and the other person had to go out of town, the other person's on vacation and as I said, that's why I got to go.
She drew the straw, she said.
I got to go. As I said, it was a mirror crossing our...
Maybe we should table that still make it be here.
Well, I think, I, you know, it's just, it's a very, I think it's a very narrow issue, you know, a very simple issue for you, whether you want to be consistent with the city or not. And I don't, I think that's what they would tell you if they were here, they, they feel strongly that should, but there's no legal prerogative that you need to do that, there's no, you know, I, I mean, I guess I, to hold it over again, I think you're just, plus it's open enrollment ends on Monday and I think, in case some of your employees are, you know, thinking that this might impact their decision on how they want to enroll, you know, I think you just probably, I mean, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I think, you know, you have all the information in front of you and it's just a matter of whether you want to make that extra money that second year, you know, towards your employees' HSA. We're all up in the air for 2016. I mean, we don't, we haven't, the city hasn't made any promises in terms of funding at that point, you know, and we're probably all going to be looking at this again at that time, so.
Well, I think a lot of the employees already have made decisions based on the decision we made earlier. I would like to leave that alone.
Yeah. I mean, because it escalated to be an issue soon after the meeting, I really have not had any official announcements to the employees or told them at all. We were even a little, probably vaguer than we should have been in the meeting minutes because I knew we were going to have to go at this again. So what they've heard has been strictly through, you know, word of mouth or the rumor mill or however you want to put it. But I don't know, are they aware, Joel? I mean, I've been in so many meetings lately, I don't know whether they're aware or not.
The employees I've had contact with are on the assumption that it's going to be funded for two years. They're, they're aware of the debate between the city and what our position is.
And most of them I've talked to are also aware that the Commission can change that. Today, they can change that in six months, they can change that in 14 months. I mean, that's a Commission decision to review that.
So the decision is going to be, do we change or do we leave it the way it is or what, what is it?
I'd like to leave it.
Is that your motion?
I guess somebody should make one, huh? If I make a motion, we leave it as is.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Neat.
And then the vote is?
To leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is, I suppose, yeah.
Okay.
Are there any ayes?
Mine.
So one, two, three, four, ayes and one aye.
Right.
The next thing on the agenda is a CRS update. Who is in charge of that, Jim?
Joel and I can get that and we kind of already talked about that in closed session a little bit. The whole idea was the fact that we're going to be using the state debt recovery service more. So with, with using that, the accounts that are going to CRS are going to be fewer, it's going to be the ones that we don't have social security numbers and driver's license on.
What?
You can't, I mean, and he can, people can refuse to give you the social security and we can't take...
They can. We do ask for it when service is set up, but it is not required under the law.
Has the state have a bigger hammer than CRC?
Well, the Department of Revenue is running this, so I'm not sure if they're, not sure where they're going to get their information as to where to pursue wage garnishments, but something tells me they're going to have more resources than CRS would be.
Well, now, is that the national, a national level or the state?
It'll be state.
State level.
Yeah.
So they have the ability to garnish wages, they can go garnish assets. And they're also, at the same time, they're kind of running the TRIP program at the same time. So any state tax refunds or lottery winnings will also be subject to their jurisdiction. So we just want to, kind of want to give the Commission an update on that little bit of change of how uncollectible accounts are run through the system.
Okay. Were there any other questions, of either? Okay, then we'll go to electric, financials and the rate of return.
What we wanted to talk about today was kind of estimating out the rate of return where we're going in electric. Last year, we ended the year at sort of 2.38 rate of return in the electric.
That's less than what we can do.
We, we're authorized to do 7%.
Right.
And we're at 2.38 in 2012. I'm estimating we're going to be right around 2.0% this year or a little bit lower. And you'll see the financials next week at our regular Commission meeting, but as of July, you know, we're essentially zero, we are at zero. So that number will creep up the next half of the year, but it's going to be right around 2%.
Are we going to send in this to the Public Service Commission and see if we can increase the rates?
Well, that's the next question that I've got for you is, we've had some initial discussions with Schenck, who's our auditors. We would like to contract with Schenck to start doing an initial study for the rate case, starting in November is what we'd like to do and having discussions with, with Schenck. That seems like a good time. What our timeline would be, we would do some of the initial work, November, December, we would pause during year end, January, February, March, pick it up end of March, early April, kind of pick up this process again, have the hearings, have it finalized, have it down to the PSC before a lot of other municipalities actually finalize their PSC report. And that's when a lot of rate cases come out at that point.
When there's a lot of competition in PSC.
Exactly. So a lot of people wait until after that PSC report comes out and they say, okay, my rate of return is less than desirable, so we need to go in for a rate case. And that would be the intention we'd like to do. The estimate from Schenck was between $8,000 to $12,000 to assist us with the rate case, depending on the number of large customers, the complexity of what we want to do, how we want to do it, who they need to talk to, and just kind of those pieces, but like anything with consultants.
Is that who we've always used?
We haven't. I don't know who they used last time, I believe they used Virtual Cross, Baker Chili at the time. They were our audit firm. So we tried to use the audit firm that we're using just because they're familiar with our numbers.
And so who was Schenck?
Schenck is our current auditors.
Oh, okay.
We've had them for three years, we did. Just to kind of keep in mind, the reason we want to go in for a rate case is not simply because our rate of return is where it's at, I mean, that's a, a big factor of it, but there's things we need to look at. We don't currently have a rate for LED streetlights and that, or having city-owned streetlights, so we don't have a rate for those. The city purchases most of the streetlights we have now, so the rate isn't a true rate. And also with LED streetlights, we can't bill them out today because we don't have a rate for them. There's not a lot of them out there, there's maybe 15 to 20.
I know the city would like to do more of them, so that's one of the, we have to...
Would that be an advantage to them or advantage to us?
Well, we don't have the rate yet, so we don't exactly know. We know they use less energy. There's questions about the light expectancy of the lamp, but...
Well, they did remove some of the stoplights to save electricity for the city, so...
Two other things, we don't have as strong as a time of day differential, so some people that can, if you're a residential time of day person, if you're somebody that works, you can really switch to a time of day rate and not have to make a lot of changes to your lifestyle to, to save money. And the whole idea of a time of day rate is to really incentivize a person to make lifestyle changes. So changing those either on-peak, off-peak times or the, the cost for on-peak and off-peak charges would be a little bit more advantageous to get customers to...
Is our software we have be able to accommodate that?
Yes, I mean, that's why we're, we're looking at it now with the AMI meters, now we have a few-year history of what everybody's hourly consumption is, so then we can more match that up with our, our peaks from a wholesale power supply standpoint while we're paying and adjust those to our, to our time of day rates. And the other issue is, you know, since we have been working with, with GLU the past several years on more diversifying their power supply portfolio, we've had rate reductions the last two years and there's one projected again, I think again for next year. So this will probably be shifting costs from power supply to the distribution side, so we're thinking it's not going to be that large of an increase because we're actually, we'll be reducing the PCA part of the bill and then increasing the distribution side of things. So we're, you know, we're hoping it's going to be around or under 5% with all the adjustments we got on most of it. We need to hire the consultant to work with Jeff to get through all the numbers to see where we're at. Now, this is something we wouldn't file this year, we'd get the report done and conceivably look at what, filing next spring maybe? And we make sure we get, let the city know what's going on and get there and everything. But first, we've got to get the analysis done to see where we go.
I wish we could get that word out to more people. You know, I haven't talked to one person yet that doesn't realize that their electric bills were cut last year. And because of those savings, it put a million dollars back into the city of Wisconsin Rapids' economy. And there's, I haven't talked to one person that knows that. Somehow, we got to get the word out that, you know, there's that savings out there for the customer.
Well, we maybe can cover it in a newsletter or something like that in the future.
Probably better in the newsletter than on a computer simply, or the internet simply because there's some people that just don't go on the internet and check those things.
With our smart meters too, we do have additional options that we may desire to design some rates around, you know, interruptible power, you know, for some residential or, you know, customers that might want to be on a rate like that, something we didn't have the opportunity to do at the last rate case. So there's just more technology, more things that we can do with this rate case and really make it beneficial for the consumer.
So again, now, we have the money budgeted for this year, there's plenty in, in our services account where the attorneys and consultants and all that are hired, we didn't use much of it this year, so it's already budgeted, but I'd still like a motion to hire Schenck to do the analysis and not to exceed number that I think Jeff has worked with him on, which is what?
Like around $12,000 or so.
I think we need to do that if we're going to make a decision on whether...
Right.
So I don't think it's, I mean, I just think we really should do that, so I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Who made the second?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have a question. You know, is any of the, like, some of the capital projects to push off to hold the rate? I mean, is that...
Well, we're going to be talking that through the budget. We're going to do the budget instead of November where we normally do the approval. I think we're going to shoot for October, say, yeah, all those things will be flushed out, capital for next year, O and M and all that stuff.
Because, you know, we, we do have a pretty aggressive schedule, I thought, as far as, you know, going ahead forward and, and, you know...
Well, it changes from year to year.
Yeah.
So yeah, I mean, those will be some things that we can look at as we go through the budget process.
Yeah.
And those numbers, once we get the budget, those will be the numbers Schenck plugs in, set 2014 as the baseline, they have to have baseline year when they file the rate cases to PSC.
Okay.
So yes, you're correct. We'll have all the opportunity to do that, we'll probably have a special Commission meeting because it usually takes us almost a day to get through the full budget or at least a morning or afternoon, line by line, so. So yes, you'll have that opportunity.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, then I think we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Educational topic, pilot. Keeping the paper industry in.
I'm doing my best to keep our time going.
I'm just teasing you, Jeff, because it's much easier for us to, to see when we visually can see it like this.
Exactly, and that's, you know, what I'm going for. And I, with a small room, I don't want to try to use a projector and I think it's nice to have a paper in front of you sometimes.
Right.
What I wanted to do is just take five minutes and kind of give a little update on what pilot is and how it affects us. This is particularly important as we go through the budget process. Again, kind of a disclaimer, what we're talking about today is just the cost of pilot. Understanding there's a cost of having a reliable system and a cost of not having a reliable system. So this is just kind of the piece of what we're paying to the city in pilot and kind of the process of that. So the history of pilot, it's really been around in some form since around 1918. The Public Service Commission kind of codified it in 1955 and kind of said, here's how pilot is calculated. And the whole idea of it was to put municipal utilities and investor-owned utilities kind of at a, at a same level, saying, here's the cost. An investor-owned utility is paying revenue, taxes and all this stuff, and a municipal was not. So kind of keeping competition the same for those different utilities.
That's, that's the intent, but it hasn't stayed that way.
Oh, we'll get there. It hasn't, unfortunately. So in 1985, investor-owned utilities had a change. They used to pay property taxes on all of their utilities, the same as what pilot is designed to be. They changed to a gross receipt tax, which is a flat tax on revenues. Pilot wasn't changed at that time. We'll get into gross receipts in a little bit to kind of see what that difference is. When we're looking at pilot though, pilot really is based on the gross book value of the total plant. So it's nothing to do with your revenues. It's all on what you've got out there for fixed assets and service as of January 1st each year. It also includes plant contributed from outside sources. So, for example, when we're doing a service run, an example would be CVS when they just went in. You know, they contribute capital because they're building a new building. That ends up being part of our total plant, even though, you know, the commission came aside, you know, we're going to do this. Part of the capital piece, it becomes an asset of the commission and of the utility. So that's kind of included in the whole gross receipt, or I'm sorry, the pilot calculation. Just kind of an interesting thing when you're looking at the elements of how pilot's calculated. It does include both the local and the school tax component when we're looking at the tax rates. And PSC did a recent study in 2012. And they're unable to identify any instances of this revenue sharing from the city to the school and the technical college districts. So it remains with the municipalities. It doesn't get distributed. Not right or wrong, it's just the process, it's how the law is written. And it's how it's, the law is kind of formatted out there. Again, when we're looking at the calculation in a minute, it's the maximum amount that can be charged under pilot. In 2011, there's 97 Class AB water facilities, which is the same class we're at here at Wisconsin Rapids. 15 out of those 97 had a lower than authorized, lower than the maximum authorized pilot payment. So they had arrangements with their city to say, you know, we need to pay a little bit less for these.
Where did we stand?
We paid the full amount. And I'll show you that calculation in, in two minutes. The calculation to get to our pilot cost, it's a little complex, but we can walk through it. Again, we start with our utility plant and service. This is the, the gross cost of that plant and service. So if it costs $10,000 for that hydrant that's outside 10 years ago, that's the cost that we're paying pilot on. It's kind of this, you know, the whole idea is the same as a property tax. So you're taking the cost of that asset. We're adding any of the materials and supplies. At January 1st, we're saying, here's materials and supplies. Again, like a business, you know, you're paying tax on that material supply that's in there. We subtract out any plant outside of city limits. We end up paying gross receipts tax to the state on that, kind of like an investor-owned utility. So we're only paying tax on, to the city of Wisconsin Rapids for assets within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. We, we multiply that number by the assessment ratio and that's, comes from the city's assessor office saying, you know, the percentage of actual cost to the percentage of what the value is of that. Times it by the city's tax rate, which again includes the state and, or the local and school tax component of that.
The assets that we have outside the city limits go to the town of Grand Rapids?
Those actually go to the state.
To the state.
Those go to the state and then they get distributed through the gross receipt tax. And that becomes our pilot payment. And if you turn the page here, you can see kind of the calculation from 2012 with the numbers plugged in. So you can see for electric, we had right around just under $50 million of plant and service. Add our materials and supplies that were in place, subtract out plant outside the limits, so all of the lines, underground cable, everything that's outside city limits. Comes up with our subtotal, which is $39.447 million of plant inside city limits. Times by the assessment ratio, this was the same assessment ratio that was on all city of Wisconsin Rapids taxpayers, property tax bills, which kind of says that's the true cost or the true current value of those assets. Times by the tax rate, which was $23.553 per thousand, which comes up with our pilot payment for this, for the electric utility was $863,000. And for the water was $678,000.
Does that go to the state?
That's what goes to the city, so the pilot payment goes directly to the city. So we calculate this in 2012, we pay this in 2013.
So this is over and about, when, when they say we pay 1.5 million in taxes, that includes the pilot?
This is the 1.5 million, essentially. So it's 863 for the electric. It's 678,000 for water. So if you look at it, pilot as a percentage of revenues, 3.19% for electric, 13.3% for water. The big disparity in why the PSC did their report in 2012 is, you know, on the water side, you've got high cost of infrastructure. It costs a lot to put pipe in the ground, to run all the services out there that need to be done, to have a water filtration plant done. But your revenues are a lot lower than electric. I mean, our revenues in 2012 for electric were $27 million. For water, they were just over $5 million. So your, your cost per dollar for your fixed assets is a lot lower in water than it is for electric. Said another way, you know, $13.3 out of every $100 of water bill is going to pay for other city services, other city programs and other city services, because that's going to the city. Again, the state average is 15%, so below that. There were some cases, it was Ironton Water Utility, Dobbinsaw County, they're actually at about 66% pilot payment to their city based on their water utility. They were a very small water utility. They'd only have like $35,000 of revenue. But again, the cost of infrastructure is almost a million dollars and you're paying on that cost of infrastructure. It's got nothing to do with your revenue. So kind of a pilot example, you know, if you turn the page and you look, if we pay the city $500,000 to replace water mains over the course of the year. And that's typically, you know, what it comes down to. Right around $500,000 to $600,000 is a new water main construction the last couple of years. Let's just say tax rates stay consistent at what we paid in 2012. That additional water main increase is going to cost about $11,000 a year in pilot payments. Indefinitely until that water mains either retired or replaced. When the PSC does their calculations, they give us a depreciation rate on water mains of 1.3%. Basically meaning that what, that water main useful life is around 77 years. So, I mean, we're going to be paying pilot on those things for a long time.
But 77 years doesn't seem logical, does it?
I mean, water main.
For a water line, the only reason I say that is we are replacing our water lines in the cemetery this year. And they haven't been in that long, but let me tell you, there's a lot of holes and it, it is costing us too much money to replace them. We're taking them all out and putting PFC so that we can replace any problems ourselves.
Sure.
And, and so I, I can't remember the exact year that George Mead put that in, of 1933, I think. So when you think of 33 and that, and we're replacing everything right now because of necessity.
So that was in there for 80 years? So, yeah. So.
And they should have been done before this. We didn't have the money to do it.
What is the, what is the material you're removing? Is it galvanized? Is it copper? What is it?
All different kinds. No, not very consistent. And actually, to be specific, I'm not over there to check because they have started and we're doing the outside lines and changing things around. And the only reason we are able to do it is because some nice gentleman died in, in his estate. Gave us $106,000 to do it, so otherwise we wouldn't be doing it.
And, you know, it, it comes down to water main in the ground will last a long time. It's buried deep. It's going to be there. But, yeah, we do have breaks every year. There's breaks happening and they repair the breaks. It doesn't mean that whole section of pipe is bad. It means, you know, they fix the problem and they go from there. But I guess based on your, your explanation, yeah, I think that 70 years is probably.
We're not putting the lines too deep because we won't be using metal. So we won't have to worry as much about, about freezing and breaking.
Sure.
But in the city, they don't have any choice. They'll have to be deep as a protection.
Exactly. So just kind of give the commission a little bit of updates on projects we're looking at. Since this is based on our total plant and service, you know, there's always been questions. You look at the, the PSC report, you look at our financial statements, it's got that number, $49 million of plant and electric and $38 million of water. We don't have a detailed plant ledger saying, you know, this piece of pipe was put in in 1937, this one was 1938. They've kind of gone through on the water side and done their GIS updates. They're doing it on the electric side right now where they're physically going out, you know, finding each one of our assets. So at that point, you know, we're going to have a very good subsystem of data to say, this, this is our true plant and service. To make sure that number's not overstated, you know, over the course of the 100 years the utility's been in business. To say, you know, has there been plant that hasn't been retired? You know, they might put new water main in, in 1972, but did they forget to take that piece of water main out that was put in originally with the city or something? So just going through and making sure we've got true numbers for what our plant and service is. We're also going through where we can on doing physical plant inventory. Paige and I just started the, the planning work on this, so we're going to verify kind of the physical plant assets that are out there. Kind of above and beyond the GIS piece. Obviously, we can't go down and say, yep, there's water main down there and here's how much there is. But we can go out and say, yes, you know, we've got all these vehicles in service. We've got this communication equipment. And just kind of making sure again, just like the GIS site is going to show us, here's the electrical assets in service. We can say, here's the other pieces of physical, you know, inventory that's, or physical plant that's in service right now. So over the next year or two, we should have that completed, have a good number and have a, a true subsystem of what our fixed assets are within the system. And then we'll be able to adjust that, that number up or down as far as what that number is for plant and service. We did touch base, I kind of just mentioned real briefly the, the gross receipts tax. So that's what we pay on plant outside city limits. We end up paying this gross receipts tax. And for our utility, it's 3.19% of revenue generated outside of the city gets paid to the state. And that goes down to Madison and then they distribute that, how they distribute it. But, you know, if this would be an investor-owned utility, if we were under the same guidelines as an investor-owned utility and we just paid straight-up gross receipts tax, this is what this calculation is showing us. Again, it's based on your revenue. It's got nothing to do with your plant and service. So that's why the water payment is reduced greatly because, again, you're basing it on the revenues. So on the electric side, it's basically a wash. We pay $600 less in taxes if we were.
Did you say the investor-owned is different than us?
Investor-owned utilities do not pay pilot. They pay simply this gross receipts tax.
Does that come out to be more or less?
Well, for us, for an electric utility, it would pretty much be a wash because of, you know, what we're paying to the city today. It's, it's, this calculation showing it would be the same. But on the water side, it would be a lot less because we'd only pay 3.2% of our revenues, which would come out to about $162,000. And it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't matter if we put in all new water main across the city at a cost of $100 million. It wouldn't look at that at all. It would just say, we want 3% of your revenue off the top and we're done. So it's just kind of, you know, where the, where the plant started originally 50 years ago when they codified, you know, the pilot payment to kind of keep in line with them and where we're at today. And it's, it's a problem for all local, small municipalities, large municipalities. Everyone has this issue and especially as, on the water side, I think a lot of smaller municipalities have aging infrastructure. I know I've talked with Dale up at Beer and, you know, they've got a lot of problems with their water mains going up there. They put in new water mains, you know, that cost of pilot payment to the city increases as calculated unless, you know, they decide to have an agreement with the city on that. So just kind of, you know, this was one of the things when I came in that was interesting to me. So I wanted to make sure, you know, the commission was kind of aware of at least how this is calculated and what the ramifications are. So as we look at budget next year, I'm not saying, you know, we can't do these projects or don't recommend we do these projects because of the pilot cost, but just knowing the cost, the true cost of that project, you know, is these pilot payments included in it. So with that, does anybody have any questions on pilot or?
Which in theory, the pilot payments do benefit the city of Wisconsin Rapids and its residents. There's no doubt about it versus what an IOU would pay, so there is a benefit to it.
And definitely, you know, that, the cost to run the city is the cost to run the city. And if, if it wasn't included in pilot payments, it would be received from other sources. So, you know, as a, as a citizen of the city, you know, you're going to pay those taxes in some form or another.
So basically, if we're, if there's going to be like $516,000 less going right now, the city's going to have to make that up in another way?
Right. Right now, they're getting that money to provide other services to city residents.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. The AP payment register discussion? We're getting a workout.
I am. I'm getting kind of tired of talking. You're probably getting tired of listening to me. With the AP register discussion, we just wanted to bring it up here. This is the report you get in the packet every month, and I'm, I'm sorry I didn't bring a copy, but you probably all remember it. It's got the detail, who received the payment, what the amount was and kind of a description of services. As our commission packets are dispersed more and are put online more to keep kind of things open and going, we need to make sure that the information on there that needs to be confidential is held confidential. And a number of cases have come up in the last couple of months where a check might go out for something that could potentially, should have been limited as far as its distribution. There's been issues, you know, if we have any garnishments for employees. Typically, the first payment we have to pay as. Typically, the first payment we have to pay is a check. So that would have been on there saying, you know, Jeff Kuhn has a garnishment for some, you know, to the Department of Revenue for unpaid taxes or something. Well, that's something we really shouldn't have on our payment register and out on our website, public information for everybody to see. In addition, there's also when we have refunds for inactive services under the new rules. With the PSC, we can't disclose any customer's status of their account. So on there, it says, you know, you've got a refund for an inactive account. There could be questions on there. Are we breaking the rules as far as, you know, giving that information out to the commissioners here? So a couple of options we could do, and just wanted to float this past the commission and hopefully have them make a decision. We could either change that report to not have so much detail on it, just give you the name and the amount. Or we could have a special finance meeting. I don't know if we could do it every other month or every quarter to have those approved, and then kind of give the option to have further discussion at that point.
Well, it's more of a review because, I mean, we're already paid anyway, so we could take advantage of discounts that were short payment and we didn't have any late payments. So I mean, when I first got it, we changed that to a review of the expenses and not approve them because they're already in the budget anyway. So this, you know, however you choose to do this, I guess, would be fine, just knowing that they're already essentially paid. So you could just be looking at them in a different format than putting them all in every packet. And we could do it, you know, as Jeff said, at a finance committee meeting or whatever.
Are you able to exclude those from a packet report that we get?
They would be...
Does that affect your reporting then?
Well, you know, I think eventually we'll talk about, you know, all the financial information that the commission does receive today from us and see, you know, if there's changes we want made to it. But, you know, as of today, we still have the commission sign off that those expenses are reviewed. So that could still happen, then it would just be, do you want to see a different format? Do we want to have a summary version of that report? Or do we want to take that to a finance committee to say, you know, kind of give the full detail to the finance committee and allow them to ask questions or, you know, deal with it at that point?
Does the city give a similar report to you? Are there all...
Yes, there's a register that, and I noticed that too. Occasionally, there'll be a name on there, and I don't know what Tim has decided to do with that, if he might just manually, you know, black out the name or the code or whatever. But we don't have it on our website or anything like that.
So I mean, I would recommend that we just have a finance committee meeting and sit down, and that's what you guys do, review all, everything that's in there and ask questions that you might have.
I think it's important that we review all the expenses. I mean, that's why we're really here. I'm still wondering, what would you have to black out? Like, if there's a...
If we do a credit refund for an inactive account, you know, under the letter of the law, we would be giving out the status of that person's account to the public because our packet is getting more dispersed and it's out there and it's public information. It's on our website at this point. So we could blackout names at that point. I mean, if we want to go with something like that.
Yeah, and usually, the people that would be in that category, there's probably a contest between us and the supplier. Is that true?
Aren't the, isn't that the amount that if they have to pay so much in and then they don't use it all, we're returning it? I don't see a big deal about that.
I don't care. That's exactly how I do it. I don't handle it.
Well, you're technically disclosing the account balance for that individual. That's what you're doing.
But we can't do that under the law.
We can't do that under the law.
For an individual's account balance, it's the same, you know, it's the same principle. You can't...
Well, I didn't think it was a difference in the balance.
That's essentially the reason that we moved accounts written off to this format. It used to happen in open session with regular commission meeting each month, but these same concerns prompted us to do it here.
If you pay so much and you paid, overpaid, and then they pay it back, that isn't knowing what their total account is.
It's still knowing something about that.
Are you going to have to physically black out that line for a monthly report, Jeff? Or is there a way you can create a report that would exclude that?
About privacy.
I think for the...
Look at all the stuff they know about us.
A short-term fix, it would be blacking out. You know, and then we could determine long-term what financial information the commission wants to see.
I'm just the name would do.
At this point, yeah. So we could go through at this point and blackout the names and...
Because there's been several lately, because we're trying to get that caught up.
Exactly.
Well, I would make the motion to change the format and refer that to the separate finance committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review the monthly expenses.
We'll make sure we do it on a locally basis, too.
Who gets them?
Um, Joe and I.
I'm going to go. It's my pleasure.
Have a good weekend.
You too.
Yeah, you look at them?
Yeah, we can, yeah. Move on to the next one.
Do you want to, so look through them or shall we adjourn and then we do them after?
Yeah, either way is fine. You're just...
Then everybody won't have to wait. So I can have a motion to adjourn, and you'll have to wait for me for a few minutes, John.
That's fine. I can do that.
I apologize. I should tease you, but...
No, that's, I deserve it.
Okay. I don't know if there was a motion made or second, but put anybody's name down that you want.
What, for adjournments or the...
For the adjournment.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a second if you need a name.